All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order for the Pownell Planning Commission meeting on February twenty first of two thousand and twenty-three at six o'clock. On agenda tonight, Board Member Roll Call, Approval of Agenda, Approval of Minutes. Then we're gonna move into update of the B C R C Planning, Planning Grant and Town of Pownell, or yes, excuse me, the Town Planning Review and Discussion and Short-Term Rental Discussion and Review, then Public Comment and Adjournment.
So Board Member Roll Call?
Do Board Member Roll Call go over?
Stacy Boxer, James Winchester, Brian Harris.
John Bashy.
Is anybody in virtually?
Um, no, just thought John was in, nobody from the meeting.
Okay.
All right, so Approval of Agenda.
Move it.
I'll second.
Voter on Table.
Stacy Boxer, aye.
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 So I'm pretty sure if we don't have anybody attending via that, we can just do a normal, normal vote.
Okay.
Okay.
So then we move on to number three, which is Approval of Minutes. And that was minutes of January seventeen.
Everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
We have enough to approve that, because I don't get abstain from that, so.
Okay, we got three and.
Well, you weren't here for it.
No.
You weren't here either.
So the only ones here are me and.
Yeah.
So we don't have enough to.
No.
Do the minutes.
Right.
We'll have to push that off to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good. So we are moving on.
Okay, update of the B C R C Municipal Planning Grant.
So I heard back from Jonathan Cooper. He sent me an email, I'll read it to you guys, said, I'd like to show this update with you, we have had to push back the bulk of the work on this project to the next six to eight months. As a reminder, the Town of Pownell submitted this municipal planning grant application in November two thousand and twenty-one and learned in December that it had not been selected for inclusion in the two thousand and twenty-two awards. The A C C C D made an unexpected second round of M P G awards in April two thousand and twenty-two that included Pownell's application. By April, however, much of our project's team time for the last half of twenty-two had been obligated to other projects that we are just now completing. We will have those resolved this month and are looking forward to making significant headway on this project immediately thereafter. Attached, please find the copy of the grant agreement that we received from July, which details a grant period concluding October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. So I had to hear from Jonathan the other day, and he wants to come to the March seventh meeting, so he'll be here next meeting.
Okay.
So I did get like pushed back a little bit, but they are gonna be working on it.
Okay. That's good, we got a little bit of.
That's election day, isn't it?
Yeah, pretty much, I think.
Uh, I don't think we're gonna be able to have a meeting that day.
Is that on that seventh? Yeah, it is, ain't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's election day. The plan is still to have elections here, right?
No, it's not, the election is not going to be here.
Okay, so we all, we don't have the occupancy permit yet.
But if you want to reschedule to the week after, we could do that, if that's.
I think it would be best to reschedule.
Probably.
Okay, let me just make sure nothing's going on that next Tuesday, also, we need you on, you guys, I'll make sure that that works with B C R C.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I won't, I know I won't be able to all the time, but I'll be.
Yeah, for this.
I'll be over there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the voting, firehouse?
Yeah, we'll be at the firehouse this year, unfortunately.
So as long as there's nothing, no like conflicting schedules for other meetings, you guys want to do it the following Tuesday?
Yeah, the following, as long as it does it.
Well, I mean, we could do, we could try a different day during the week. Would that work for everybody? Well, I don't know what.
Wednesday you got.
Guy from B C R C could do.
B C R C has Wednesday night, so.
Yeah, yeah, D R V is Wednesday, we got Plannings on Thursday, or I mean, uh.
Tuesday.
Thursday, you guys have a meeting, right?
Yeah.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, because Thursday will be the first meeting after the, after the election, so that will be Board Reorganization, and then the next Planning Commission meeting after that will be Board Reorganization then as well.
Mm-hmm.
We can try for the fourteenth, if you guys want, I'll reach out to B C R C and see if that works for them, and then I can.
I know, is that one or the following, what our normal meeting the following week would be to.
Okay.
See which one works best for them, and then, because we're gonna have to reorganize here, and then.
Yeah.
And then do whatever it is that they need done, whatever they're gonna be saying. So if we can get them on in a week early, that's fine, if not, we'll just shoot for the, the third week.
Okay, perfect.
Is that all right for everybody else?
I'm fine with that.
Sure.
I just don't want to see us get into conflicts with.
Yeah.
Trying to meet here while they're having the active election over there.
Yeah, that's a good point, Brian.
It's a busy town.
We're trying to be. It's time to wake up.
I think we need more than one meeting place. What about the schoolhouse?
Uh, I don't think we have the occupancy permit yet, so we can't technically use that portion of the building yet.
It's so close to being finished, but it's not quite finished yet, so.
So we missed it for that, but we should be able to hopefully use it for November's election, huh?
Yeah, definitely. Well, I shouldn't say definitely, I shouldn't say that, very hopefully.
I know, I was, I was hoping to tell people, oh, we should be able to vote in here in March. No, I gotta eat crow.
Yeah, we were thinking it wasn't gonna be March, everybody was thinking that, so.
Ah, delays happen.
All right, so we got a little bit of an update, we're gonna be moving ahead from that.
Okay.
That's good. So now we're going on to Town Plan Review and Discussion. What I was proposing is some new things have changed in our town, the way things are going, I've read through some of this stuff, I don't know if anybody else has been through the town plan at all. My, my feeling is, is that it's coming up, I mean, this was done in April nineteen, but it's gonna be coming up again soon, where we're gonna have to start discussing this and maybe.
It doesn't hurt for everybody on the Planning Commission to become familiar with it.
Right, so I've been going through it, I know there's a lot to go through, so it's not gonna be a rush on this, but.
Is this still available on the website?
Yes, it is, it's on there, this is printed off of it, so. I just ran it all and got it so I could have something, but if you need copies of stuff, we can have a bunch made up for, for everybody, or have it sent out, you said to an email, maybe?
Yeah, I can send everybody an email copy, and then if you want it, like physical copy, just let me know, and I'll print it out for you.
I'd rather have a hard copy.
Yeah, I would like a hard copy as well, because reading it on my little tiny phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't work so well.
No, that's why I printed it.
Like you're on page, you know, seventy-three, and you gotta go two hundred pages past that.
Yeah, when you wanna try to flip back and forth between stuff, it's so hard on the digital.
That's why I went like this, so it made it, I could get it, made it a lot easier.
I'm still old-fashioned, I like to be able to highlight stuff and like, post the notes on pages.
Exactly, same here. But I was, as I was going through it, I was noticed a few things that, in my view, anyway, this is just me, everybody's gonna have their own opinion on it, but just some things I don't think fit today, just what we've been going through today. It was set talking about, there's things that talk about, you know, not having, or how our economy was great back in the sixty, seventies, eighties with businesses here, stuff like that, and then the following paragraph says, well, we won't have businesses here, basically, it's trying to almost go over what they just said, so I just wanna kind of review some of this stuff and see where, you know, most of this information in here is just, you know, talks about what it says, and maps and all that kind of stuff, but I just wanted people's opinion on it, where everybody would, you know, felt about it, so if we could get a copy and maybe read through it, a further discussion, but I just wanted to bring it up, it's, we don't have to do a whole lot of discussion tonight on it, unless you already have some feelings on it. But it was just, there's some things I don't think, you know, we need to, if we're gonna have business in town, we gotta make sure that it's looking at business, we're looking at land locations for businesses to come in, but yeah, it's really talking.
Yeah, I think it's, it's fine for, for Pownell to, for some people to think that we should be a suburb of Williamstown, Bennington, whatever, but I don't think we should be shutting the door to any possibility of business.
Right, and there's, I mean.
I mean, I know the economy kind of stinks right now, but like, we should, you should keep your mind open, and the town should be accepting of new possibilities.
So, you know, everybody says, oh, we want, we want places, we want a diner, we want a bank, or, you know, but then, if, if they put in a permit, okay, everybody's gonna stop protesting, we don't want that, it's unbelievable the way.
Well, that's, well, that's where like, the, the town plan kind of points the direction of where, where the town thinks it should go, and then the D R V's job is to then to craft zoning bylaws and regulations that would help accomplish that, and then the Select Board then approves those zoning bylaws and changes, and then put it before the voters if maybe for major changes.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of how the process should work.
I think you've got a lot of potential land for, for a lot of things to come in on Route seven.
Yes.
From the Dollar Store.
Yeah, and during the last round of.
Right, up to the, um.
Oh, there's, yeah, and I've always felt that three forty-six and Route seven are our main thoroughfare, through town, and I personally didn't agree with changing a lot of the commercial and industrial areas to even mixed use or even to residential, because once an area goes residential and houses are built, it's most likely never gonna change away from that.
Mm-hmm.
And you lose the potential for the business tax income, the added revenue of customers coming in, the employees that would work, and then hopefully spend money within the town, so I, I personally would like to see us try to change some of those zoning areas back to commercial, from mixed use, strictly commercial.
Well, isn't Route seven a commercial?
No.
No, it's all residential?
It's, it's all mixed use and residential.
Well, the only thing that's moved on Route seven is the church, across from the Pownell Beach Barn, and that's, young buddy, he had two fifty, and, which I think is a good thing, it's bringing a hundred forty people to town.
You mean the new church that's coming in?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Where the coffee place was, the seven-day advance, people are gonna build a church there.
Right.
So the rest of it, I think, in the planning, we didn't take from, say, Bowery's Pond down to, say, my store, without, well, the motel probably.
Motel.
Legion.
Yeah.
Didn't want anything there.
Mm-hmm.
What down.
But there's areas where it can do stuff.
Yeah, 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 there isn't really much land to do anything there, except for the Armstrong property, which is already being taken over, but other than that.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
There's.
Right, and we're, and we're looking at, you know, with B C R C is giving us a look at where we could put, possibly put the industrial land again, because that was gone in it. But again, you know, just commercial, where do we put businesses when they wanna come here? Alls I've ever heard was, back even a few years ago, is that it's a housing community now, it's not, it's not a business community, and I'm like, you read the, read this whole first paragraph right here on page four, and it says about how this, that's how Pownell became Pownell, because of all the businesses that were in it.
Yeah.
And there's a list of businesses all put in it, all different types of businesses, but because some of them went out, the bigger companies went out, now everybody, you know, and I feel from this, what I'm reading, and things I've heard around town, it feels like that's what they want, is just a, a housing community, not any of this business again, and I don't, I disagree with that, I don't think Pownell is, is that thriving community because of that, you gotta have some business in town, and you're not gonna get it, and actually, in one paragraph here, it states that most people will be looking for jobs outside of Pownell.
Yeah.
Meaning going to Mass, New York, someplace else for, for a job, we had all these places we can have jobs, we could get jobs here, and it doesn't have to be, I'm not talking like, you know, big hundred-person, you know.
But you also have property owners that have a for-sale sign and list their properties.
Mm-hmm.
The property's not for sale, then where's the business gonna go?
Right.
Right. Well, I think that's where, hopefully, trying to change the town plan a little bit, and trying to steer the D R V toward rezoning some areas, and point to be like, listen, this is a commercial property, like, you don't have to worry that, you know, you're gonna be hindered by houses next to you.
Well, the, the Dollar Store is on a commercial property, no?
Yeah, it is, that, that's kind of a, you know, the Dollar Store.
I'm thinking from there, north to the Snowshoe Place.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, should it all be commercial?
Oh, yeah.
Lots of area there.
Yeah.
But it's mixed use now, means that you could put a house in it.
I like, I like mixed use.
Okay, well.
Rather than just saying.
Why not rezonate? There's a lot of.
Commercial.
I mean, that's, that's a perfect place for a builder to come in and put a small shopping center or something in there.
Like, I've always liked those two lots right, right in front of the racetrack down there, on either side of the entrance.
Yeah.
Where the ball field is and that field right across the street, I've always thought like, those are two prime locations right there.
We have people.
I mean, I know.
From Massachusetts, you have people coming down, and you have local residents, you know, will support all this.
I'll give you an example here, this is one of the paragraphs I marked, just to give you an idea of, this is where I come up with these ideas anyway, so there's another challenge of the real estate tax burden, which we all know our taxes have been going up, I have an example of something about that, that I think we need to talk about later, but it continues to grow as our population ages. Although population numbers have remained flat for the last ten years, many of the younger generations find little opportunity here and start leaving the area.
Mm-hmm.
This is such a concern for, as in two thousand and fifteen, the General Assembly of the State of Vermont formed the Vermont Economic Development Zone, and with this in mind for this trend, that's the kind of thing, if, if you're pushing out all the younger people, it's.
Right.
How's, how's anything gonna grow?
There's nothing.
It's not, it's not all the older generation that's gonna have businesses, it's the young ones coming into it, trying to, trying to make something in their lives, they wanna start something, that's where you gotta have opportunities.
I think that's why we need to do everything we can on a local level, to try to make it as business-friendly as possible.
Right.
I mean, within, within reason, I mean, like you said, like you said, I don't wanna turn Pownell into New Jersey.
Right.
As much as I'm against these dispensaries, I think a dispensary would be great here.
Mm-hmm. I mean, every time.
I, I, I know exactly what you're saying, but like, the one they just opened in Bennington on Main Street, that place is packed constantly.
Yeah, there's another one coming on, by Walmart.
Yep.
And, and that's the thing, that's, you know, I just think we should look over it, kind of read it, read up on it, you know, everybody should take, get a copy and go over this type of stuff, and just see where their, where their opinions lie with it, the way it's based here now versus what we've already started seeing, I mean, we wanna try to, we're trying to find land for, for industrial, we're trying to, I think Pownell has been trying to, I feel it is, has been trying to promote some business here, trying to get new, new businesses, and it's just, I think we should really look at it and have view and see what's there, I just don't think this now represents enough of Pownell, what we, what we strive to be.
Yeah, it's kind of limited, now we got the, the state line to, say, the post office, this racetrack, like you say, those places there, they do have water and septic, those two spots, they can be have, but down there, we didn't run the water and septic down there, down to Stewards.
What's happening with the racetrack, by the way?
Nothing.
They're not knocking.
That's a bunch of legal limbo right there, it's out of the town's hands.
Yeah, they're not knocking it down, they're.
It's out of the town's hands, it's.
The parent just reached out to the state the other day, and they, they're still looking into it too, they don't really have an answer, they didn't have a, they don't have a.
So they own this property, and they can't really sell it or do anything, is there lean on it?
Well, I'd like to see it for sale, but what the catch twenty-two is the solar panels, we don't get anything out of them, they're there, they get thirty cents a kilowatt, and get enough revenue to pay the taxes, right? And that.
So they just.
So we can't foreclose on, because of the solar panels that generate the money.
Do they pay taxes?
They do pay taxes, yeah, yeah, but we don't get anything out of it, I, I like.
So it's all one piece of property?
Part of the problem is, is if the town tries to pursue it to foreclose on it, we're on the hook to clean it.
Yeah.
Which is its whole other thing.
Yeah, it's gonna be very.
Like, that gentleman that came before the board last year or so, had the big idea for the town to try to take it.
Turn it to a.
And, yeah, and, but, like, there's more opportunities grant-wise and federal and state assistance-wise for municipality, but still, it's a huge upfront burden to the town and a huge gamble.
Yeah.
The town takes it, then doesn't get the funding for, we're on the hook for it.
You got the river, which tends to go in the river, very striking.
Well, that was the other thing, the floodplain changed, and now it's in the middle of the building.
And the railroad, closes off the North Gate.
Yeah.
But you gotta pay to use, so the only thing we have is the, you know, the South Gate, which is limited for a lot of things. I think we could work with the railroad sometime, I think they'd like to, well, that's another issue, it's not gonna.
I think we could get it open to the other one, but I think it's gonna take a lot of upfront money.
Well, you, you close up the South Gate, they don't like that, and trade the North Gate, and also, you'd have to trade the Little Gate by Matt Balding, at Clayton's Cross there.
Oh, yeah, that back entrance?
Yeah, they'd, they'd like to close that, Sid kept that open, yeah, I had the lawyer and spent a lot of, spent a lot of money on it, but they would, they would, you got a new owner also now, you know, when they started back with the B in Boston, Maine, and then they went to Pan Am, and now you've got these guys that, you know, they've only owned it about a month or two months.
What is that?
Um, why, you know, it's, it's a big company, it's, I'm, I'm done, I'm lost of who they are, but.
That's what, the property on Route three forty-six?
They own, they own the railroad.
Pan Am, is it?
Is it?
Is it Pan Am?
No, Pan Am sold to these people here.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I keep thinking Norfolk and those people that are in Ohio, but it's not there.
CSX, I think. Sorry, I think it's CSX, but I'm not sure.
Oh, it might be, yeah.
Where'd Bob come from?
Bob's here. Anyway, that's the issue with the racetrack, so, and I think they, they told him they'd like to see it boarded up by, I talked to the owner one time, he asked me if I could find somebody to do it, and I found somebody to do it, but he never got back, with some kind of fence around it.
But I think unless properties in commercial areas are put up for sale, nobody even knows that they can go there.
Mm-hmm, right, right, and it's growing up fast, you know.
And, and somebody looking to build a building, you know, for their factory or whatever, shopping center or whatever, they're going through a commercial or real estate, you know, service, they're looking at what's available.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if the property is not available, then they're not looking at it.
We got dirt down there from Williamsstown, we got the couple of buildings that are there, it's actually a hard place to find a place to shoot off fireworks, it's grown up so bad, we moved them up along, hopefully, they might take some of that stuff out, use it in the new firehouse in Williamsstown, but that's the only, the Brockman Science Center's sitting down there all chewed up, ready to go.
How much clear space do they need to launch fireworks?
Oh, not much, no, you know, but you gotta be away from people, kind of.
Would the, down by the sewage treatment plant be an open area big enough?
Could be, could be, but I think for now, we can find a place there, you know.
Well, I was just thinking, you could launch fireworks there, and then you got the, the ball field.
Oh, yeah.
The parking lot, plenty of places for people to sit and watch.
There is, but I, I'd say the last time I was down there, I was getting, you know, filled up a little bit, trees are growing through the hot tub. Anyway, I, you know, it'd be nice if Mr. Sol would tell us, is it for sale, and how much is it worth? And who owns the solar panels? Last I heard, they were in a company in Portugal.
Yeah.
That, on the energy market there, so.
You know, sometimes.
Hopefully, we get to find out.
Sometimes the energy doesn't even go locally.
Oh, no, that, it doesn't.
It was never.
It gets sold into the grid and just, that's it.
Yeah, we, we don't get anything out of the solar panels, they do.
That covers their taxes.
Yeah.
Well, one juice, back to the, this type of discussion here is, I just wanna try to get everybody's idea on that, so if it can get a copy, if you can make copies for everybody.
A little homework for everybody?
Yeah, a little homework, I just wanna go over it, have, have you kind of go through it, I know it's, it's a lot of pages to sit and read every page, there's a lot of graphs and stuff, but read the basics of it, so you got understanding of what the plan is, and then if you form any ideas and, and something we could discuss, we can throw it into the next meeting again and discuss it, our next couple of meetings, we can just keep hitting at it and.
Well.
See, see what we, how we feel at that point, but one of the other things that came up, we just had a D R V meeting, and the discussion on that, we're gonna do some more discussion there before it comes back to this board, but one of the things that we've been hearing is that the motel down here, the state's looking at potential buying it up, making it all.
Ladbrook?
Yeah.
April, they're supposed to be removed, people have kinda noticed they have to leave in April.
With which motel?
Ladbrook.
Yeah.
It's definitely.
So, you know, there's gonna be more.
What's the state gonna do with it?
Well, they're gonna refit it, I think, for homeless people, and that's all it's.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the end, that's what Montpelier's doing, they're buying up these old motels and refitting them with these pots, and these little, little houses, and.
So essentially, like low and.
Yeah.
Low-income housing.
Yeah, they'll feed them, and they just get a, a john and a bed, and just a small kitchen, whatever, you know, so they got about a hundred of those pots in Montpelier area, in confined, and that's the next thing, buying up hotels.
So that'll be another discussion coming.
Well, that's what we were talking about at the D R V, was, you know, people don't stay in motels much anymore, they go Airbnb.
Well, I was gonna say, the state pretty much took them all over during COVID, and.
Yeah, these motels we'll put in, I assume, for the racetrack, right?
Originally, probably, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, pretty much that's the only one that's still operational in Pownell.
Yeah.
It used to be a lot more.
Right.
Yeah, there used to be one up here, right over here, that mountain burnt.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, so, it gives us something to look at.
Okay.
We're gonna, gonna go through that.
So we're gonna look at this and come back with feedback?
Yeah, just feedback, where feelings are, and.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff is pretty much along state lines.
Yeah.
You know, you can pick out pretty much what Pownell's involved in.
Right, and it's how you feel about Pownell.
Yeah.
Which direction you think it goes, and if this stays aligned with it, or if it's falling out of alignment.
A lot of NIMBY though, you know, throughout the whole state. You want to build something here, even Massachusetts, you know, not in my backyard.
But if the majority of town is what, two acre zoning?
If you're in town, there's a bunch of different types of zoning. So if you're in a village area, it's less than you are outside of that.
Because I almost think it should be larger than two acre zoning.
What, to be able to build something?
Yeah, but it's, right, I think it should be like five acre minimum or 10 acre minimum, something like that.
For building what, like just anything in general, like home?
For a home.
No, I don't agree with that.
Well, what you get is two acres without taxes. You get that free. And after that, you've got to pay taxes on the land. I've got eight acres, so two of them, six of them I'd have to pay for taxes.
Well, somebody with, you know, 30 acres, I could start putting five, six houses on my, my property.
You're going to get a subdivision, come before the D R B, and that's all works, you know.
I don't want to do that.
No, no, I'm just saying.
You could do that.
Sure, sure.
And I think if people start doing that over time, you're going to have, you know, houses all over the place. I don't know that that's what this town wants. I don't think so.
No, I don't, I don't either.
Well, like I said, that's what I wanted, the type of discussion I wanted.
I think you can build on as little as an acre. If you've got like town septic and municipal water.
Here's the key.
Yeah, I think it's a half acre in village designation. If you're, if you're out in town, you know, water or has water or sewer.
And that's pretty limited, you know, I mean, there, that's the sewer. The rest of it's septic.
So what if somebody buys, say, Peckham Farm, 100 acres, they put up 40 houses?
Well, they would have to go before the DRB to get permission for that for subdivision. That would be the public's chance for an input, well, surrounding property owners.
What could you put in? If it's two acre zoning and you're giving everybody two acres?
You could do that.
What are they going to say?
The D R B, but you're talking with.
I know there's going to be a lot of people complaining.
The other thing is, is like, is the land already been placed in a state conservatorship to where you can't do that? Like, that's, that's all stuff that would have to be addressed. And a lot of the bigger farms, you'd start finding out that they've been placed in conservationship.
Most farms, like Strommers and stuff like that, they're all on state farming, so you can't, it can only stay in farming. So if you could buy it up, you just can't build other things.
You won't be able to, you could do like limited logging.
Right.
And I think even then, it's like only with a state mandated forest management plan, sorry, excuse me.
But yeah, forget it, get a copy of those, just read through it. Write down your ideas. We'll come back to, say, like, in April. We can do a meeting in April, give everybody enough time to.
Yeah, I think that's, that's plenty of time for everybody to do a little homework, come back with suggestions if you have any. I mean, majority of the planning commission might come back and say that they don't want to make any changes.
So we'll set something up in April for that on agenda then. Okay, let's move on to short-term rentals, discussion and review.
So we've kind of discovered there's about four or five already in town. And I think the other night we said that nobody's come before the board. So we think the next thing that could happen here in town is that somebody wants to come in here and start doing some Airbnbs. And we think they should come before the DRB for certain things like, number one, water and septic. If you take an old house and you add on to it and you destroy your septic system, you know, this is what's happened around the state. People have come in and bought a house and they would addition on it and bingo, the septic is not adequate. So that's one of the things we should look at and for everybody's protection.
Do you need a permit for any?
No, you don't.
Rentals?
No, but that's the, we're going to discuss it more in the DRB before it comes to the planning commission. But this is kind of like a heads up on that kind of idea that's coming down the road here. But if you have a house, it's, right now it's fine to, you can make an Airbnb out of it. But what's happening is their septic systems are set for, say, a four-person house. And they're putting large groups inside of it and it's system, they're going to start failing. And that's the concern that the DRB is trying to look into.
That's why they do the septic based upon how many bedrooms, because they know how many people can see who's sleeping, you know. It's usually no more than two people in a bedroom.
Well, it's not so much bedroom space as it is water usage. So in a house, you get, you get water usage is a volume that your septic system can handle. And that's all in engineering drawings. So if you have, say, 10 gallons an hour in it, then you would have, and that's just shooting numbers out, but if it's like 10 gallons an hour and they're using 20 an hour, your system is going to wind up failing on it.
Somebody from the city is getting a half an hour's shower, you know, these kids.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's.
And it's, and it's more people, that's what it comes down to, is how much per person.
These Airbnbs, but their houses are not able to handle it.
Right, systems aren't.
Where does the town come in on this?
No, we don't.
Right now, we don't.
I reached out to the LCT after DRB conversation. Do you want me to read the response?
Sure.
So after DRB, we had some questions about if we really could even regulate Airbnb. So the LCT got back to us. They said towns can regulate short-term rentals either through zoning or a standalone ordinance. If the current zoning bylaws do not allow for them or the use doesn't fit some other allowable use, such as a hotel or bed and breakfast, the ZA can treat any short-term rental use as a potential violation. If the town wants to allow them and set parameters such as zoning permit requirements and standards, it can amend its bylaws to do so. The applicable law is 24 VSA 229129, which reads, "To regulate by means of an ordinance or bylaw, the operation of short-term rentals within the municipality, provided that the ordinance or bylaw does not adversely impact the availability of long-term rental housing. As used in the subdivision, short-term rental means a furnished house, condominium, or other dwelling, room, or self-contained dwelling unit rented to the transient, traveling, or vacationing public for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days or for more than 14 days per calendar year." In our bylaws, Carl and me actually talked about this, we do have an in-bed and breakfast, which Airbnbs can fall under. The definition is a building or complex of buildings containing rooms with separate or joint entrances which are rented as sleeping units normally to transients, also a residential dwelling in which a portion of the house is adapted to use as lodging for travelers and where meals may be served. And in our bylaws, if you go to our land use matrix, for our in-bed and breakfast, we do require permitted with, say, plan approval or conditionally permitted.
Do they collect sales tax?
For the Airbnbs, I'm not really sure about that. I'd have to.
Do they have to have insurance?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, you definitely have to have insurance with Airbnb.
Airbnb, to use their site, yeah.
Yes, to use the site, yeah.
You have to be insured through them, but that's not to say somebody couldn't just do it through like a Craigslist or.
Who's going to even know if they have insurance or not?
Well, to be listed on Airbnb's website, you have to be registered and you have to provide that documentation. So they regulate that, at least on that aspect of it. But that's not to say somebody couldn't just do it independently and just make things on the internet on their own. And there's other companies out there as well.
If we have the in-bed and breakfast in here, then should people already be getting permits? Because from the way the LCT explained it to me, it seems like.
It seems like it would already, we could already play under that same.
And Carl Strommer can add the same understanding as well, because I talked to him a little bit.
Yeah, but then it comes down to enforcement, like how do you, I mean, short of having somebody sit there and like scroll availability on the different Airbnb sites for panel and then essentially contacting them and say, can I see your zoning permit, please?
So it's zoned presently to be able to do it?
Let's put it this way, it's just done. And I think the ones that we do have in town, let's see, Doc Tansman's across the river, they did a great job there. Nice place. And he has a little place across from me in the corner, Wilcox House. He just got one little cabin there and then he's done with. And because Jenny Duaz got a couple. And, and I think the, the store up here in panel center across from here.
Oh, the antique, old antique place.
The.
The art place there?
Yeah, the gift shop.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They got a section of apartment that I see a lot of people there. And I think there's about five. So they seem to all operate well and there's no problems. They're out on the internet and people use them a lot.
But there could be five or 10 others that you don't know about.
We don't know, yeah. That's the next big thing to come, if it does. That someone could buy, like you said, their farm here, turn it into.
How long can they be doing this if they're running out of well water, you know, where the septic is leaking, you know? It's, they're not going to just continue to do it.
Water's a big issue in certain parts of panel.
Well, it's water and sewage. You've got to be able to get rid of it.
Yeah.
But we're going to discuss that more on a DRB. You got that information for them, so, for that board. We'll go over that some more. And if it's, if they're going to take any position as far as DRB wanting to change any of that, it'll be, you know, sent up to us to.
Put something in.
Change some things. Yeah, we'll be changing some stuff and then we'll send it back to them and. So we're going to be, we'll work. Right.
So just to give you an idea, just searching just on one of the most popular sites for Justin Pownell, there are, holy crap. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. Hold on. Depending on how far I zoom out, oh, there's about at least 20 that crop up.
Yeah, but you know what? When you do a search panel, and sometimes it could be Manchester, but it just comes up.
I'm literally looking at spots that are popping up on the map.
Right, on seven.
So I'm zoomed in on panel.
20, huh?
And that's on the site. It doesn't mean anything else. There still could be people that aren't.
And you can see the state map, so you can, you can see where the boundaries are. So there's quite a few, and I guarantee you, most of them are not permitted for it.
Yes, I agree.
So I guess it comes down to how hard do we want to go after people to at least like, like I don't have an issue with it, like, I think most of them should, should be able to pass.
Most of them probably.
Most of them probably don't even realize we have something in effect.
They just cleaned up and started renting and, like I said, the bigger, I think the bigger issue is going to be, how many people do they, do they allow in? That's, that would be the bigger question. If it's, if it's set up as, you know, again, their usage is whatever, 20 gallons a minute or 20 gallons an hour in usage, then, and they're putting in 30 people into this place because they readapted it and made it up. That's, that's going to be the concern, whereas if it's only four people.
How much is it to get a permit? Is it a yearly thing?
For permits, well, the permits cost, I'm not sure what they are now for permit cost, but it depends on what the board would want us to do. There could be an update every year to take a look at what they're doing. Or it's just a one-time permit.
Doesn't mean that their, their water and sewage is okay. It'll be fine today and a year or two later, you know, the septic is trashed.
Right.
But they might not want to stop doing this. So I guess there is a responsibility of the town.
Right, and that's what I think, looking into.
Safety factor.
I think most of that just kind of points toward.
The ownership.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of the bigger issue that panel's historically had with enforcement in general. That we've been very lax on enforcing any of our zoning codes or any of our ordinances. And I know this current select board has been gearing us toward having the teeth to start enforcing zoning bylaws in ordinances. And I think this would, this might just be another example of where the town may need to strengthen it. Especially given the volume of that, I was just on a quick search, just in general, able to pull up, and some of those are listed at 600 bucks a night. So.
Yeah, and then, then again, we move into other concerns and stuff. What if it does fail? Where do we, where do we go from there to the town? You've got sewage leaking out on the ground. Is the town stepping up enforcement to say, you need to get this fixed?
Well, that falls onto the health officer position, but the state has been drastically redoing what the health officer can and can't do. Essentially, a lot of that authority is getting stripped away from that and going up to the state level.
I think the property, property owners doesn't want an order around, you know, if you've got people there that say, hey, this place smells, they're not going to stay there.
Yeah, I think most property owners don't want their septic to fail.
Right.
So they probably regulate the number of people that stay and, you know, a lot of people don't.
The hope is this, that's what we're hoping, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure there's some that don't even give it a thought till suddenly the toilet don't flush. Or they've got a black pond in their backyard.
Right.
Yeah. The fossil good, because the number, they've been there quite a while, the five I know.
Yeah.
That's good. As long as, I mean, if it's, I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's working, that's business in town, you know what I mean? That's where I see it.
Oh, yeah.
But there is some concerns, depending on how big those people want to go. Hey, it works great now at four, five, six people in there. And then they go, well, if I make another room and I can get four more people in there, they'll all share the bathroom.
It might not hurt to just try to put a reminder out to the public that, hey, you know, we, we welcome Airbnbs, but there is a zoning process for it. You should get a permit for it.
Right. Yeah, we're going to discuss it more on the DRB anyway before it actually fully comes to us. If it's anything going to come this way, we're going to discuss it more there and then we'll see where, where they follow. Might, might do not, you know, do nothing with it. They might say, hey, we want to do a little bit more. And that board is going to kind of make that decision first, I think. If it's more, then they'll send it to us to discuss.
As long as, you know, if it's a, if it's a nice place, most people I don't think would have an issue with, you know, getting themselves a $30, $30 permit for a year or whatever, or if it's a forever type permit.
You've got these people around. I mean, I mean, if you check with the people that suck out septic tanks, like A1 and those people around Vannington, whatever, you get an idea who, who uses it the most.
Right.
But that's what they do, you know, all up and I've had a big party here, come on up.
Say profit before.
Right.
Cool. Does the town get sales tax revenue from businesses like Stewart's?
No, the town doesn't have an independent sales tax.
All the sales tax goes to the state?
Yeah, whatever sales tax is put on, is put on by the state.
We used to have an inventory tax back when.
I would think that the town should get a portion of that, no?
They say it comes back to us directly in some forms, like putting up people, homeless people and stuff like that.
And state grants and stuff and like that.
It's all a part of that.
It goes into the state coffers and then the town recoups part of that through the act, you know, through the Act 60 probate or pre-bate stuff for homestead and through school funding and.
It gets, it gets around.
Okay.
And we don't, we currently don't, I don't feel we have the commercial or the industrial base to levy a separate sales tax like Manchester does. And if anything, stuff like that on a small town, that's just going to be one more, one more strike against us for a business wanting to come in.
So Manchester has a separate tax?
Yes.
They charge what?
On top of the six point, on top of the six?
Yeah.
So it's seven up there?
Turn.
Six to the state, one to the town.
Get a cut. Yeah, they do. And we argued with the lottery and we're supposed to go to school, which they say eventually it does. Selig said, if you, you guys want to do that, I'm going to be to it. So it doesn't go anywhere. Trick or treat.
Yep, trick or treat.
Got it.
All right, good discussion on that. Again, we're going to be circling around to that again, I believe. So move on to public comment. Do we have anybody that wants to make public comment out there?
Yes, I'm sorry, can I just break in? I didn't raise my hand.
Hello, Bob.
Anthony Road. Just some public comment, as I just sent, I just sent a, because you were talking about the town plan, I sent a SWOT analysis to the, I think I got everybody on the planning commission. And it, the only reason I sent it is because it does talk about town plan. It was done in 2019 by our economic development committee, and I thought it was, I thought it was pretty good. And I, and it does reference the town plan, so it's probably something you want to think about when you're looking at it. I think that's about, I actually joined because I thought we were going to get more information from the B C R C about the municipal planning grant. But it didn't look like, looked like we pushed that off a little. I think I can understand. I did watch, for my part, I did watch the planning commission where the E C R C made their presentation, and I did like a lot of what they were talking about. It was the, and if I understood it correctly, I don't think they really have even started their work yet. But I know that, in my opinion, anyway, I, I thought what we were asking them to do was to take a look at the zoning throughout, throughout panel and, and with a focus on trying to determine where, if we did have somebody coming into town wanting to set up a business or particularly industrial, but also large business of commercial variety, where, where could we put them and where would we, how could we zone that? And remember that the zoning has to do with, it's not about taking somebody's land and making it industrial. It's about where you zone things, and then it would still be up to the businesses to either make an offer on property or only if the property is for sale or, or whatever. But it does send that message to potential businesses of, of whether or not we are business friendly or, or we put hurdles up in, in, do we put hurdles up for new businesses and, and come up with new requirements? So I, I, you know, you want to be safe, but from my standpoint, I would like to see us be as business friendly as possible. Both large and small businesses. And I think, I think it enhances, it enhances all of them. Those large businesses raise your baseline standard of living to a point that it can support better smaller businesses and our local farms. We had more thriving farms, more open meadows when we had industrial in town. So, and people seem to forget that. They seem to think that it's a, not, not, no one on that board, I'm just using my three minutes. But people seem to think that it's, that it's, that it's small business against the large business or artist against big business or, or whatever. It's not. It's, it's all inclusive and, and every business supports every other business.
Except for the bio, the biomass plant. When the racetrack was here, they were going to open up a biomass plant, and I think we rejected that.
Well, I think, well, yeah, there's, I mean, there's definitely, any business that comes to town has to pass muster for what we feel that panel, you know, really wants.
Surrounding area, yeah.
But I would like to be able to pick and choose which businesses come here, but right now we've got no interest. But I would like to be able to pick and choose which businesses come here, but right now we've got no interest.
No, nobody's on board. A motorcycle shop in North Powell.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully there's more.
That's what we need.
Hey, it's something.
It's something.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No other public comments? All righty, then look for adjournment.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.